And I've had the list of television programmes people want to get home to see.[5.12][5.12](Laughter) So we'll see how far we get. Thank you. Now, item one on the agenda tonight, apologies for absence.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Apologies have been received from councillors Peter Martin, Roger Steele, Jane Thompson, Andrew Wilson and from both tenant panel representatives Brenda Greenslade and Adrian Waller.
Thank you. Declarations of interest? None, thank you. Service Plan Action Plans 2015/16. Now, this is in fact going to be introduced by Paul Wenham, I believe.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, just a few words of introduction. I think members are just about in the majority at the moment.[51.57][51.57](Laughter) So, Chairman, before you tonight, we've got the draft service plans. If I can remind members that the draft service or the service plans support the council's corporate plan and the corporate priorities. And you remember, and I had to get a copy of this off Roger's wall, we've got the mnemonic value. And that has been really good. And it's certainly brilliant when we have new starters and they really understand that. And I think residents as well can relate to it. And that is a key plank behind the corporate plan. So I'll say more on that in a second. So service plans support that corporate plan. They outline strategic tasks, both statutory and discretionary. So the humdrum, the statutory stuff like counter-tax collection, making sure we've got the money to deliver all the great services we deliver, as well as the discretionary stuff, important things like the memorial hall, moving the Brightwell's gostrey there. So it covers the whole range of things. Service plans are produced annually. They fit in with the budget and the Star Chamber process. Corporate overview and scrutiny have got some papers tomorrow evening, community next week, which marries nicely to the service plans. Later this year, it will be the job of the new council to update and produce the new corporate plan. The contents of the service plans, when they've been through this evening and through to the executive, will provide a solid foundation for that corporate plan to be launched. Thank you for, members in advance, for tonight, giving the opportunity, the heads of services, to present the draft service plan. Look forward to your comments. They then go on to the executive in a couple of weeks' time. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed, Paul. Now, because it's going to be, there's going to be quite a lot here, each head of service will present their plans. We will be controlling everything by the timer tonight. So, heads of service, you have four minutes. And there is six minutes per service plan for members. Now, that's going to be very difficult for members. So just remember, it's six minutes for all of you. And please, quick questions, not long statements. You should know that one of the things that I've asked Paul for is that, I think would have been helpful tonight, were to know when last year's service plans, what we'd actually achieved and what was being carried over. Because at the moment, as far as I'm concerned, these are all new service plans. So if we'd like to start off, Kevin, I think you've got the majority of this. Please, carry on.
Thank you, Chairman. The community service, service plan, pages one through to 11. I'll just give a brief overview of the service. It covers leisure and culture, which is the leisure centres, the community halls, sport development and arts and cultural outreach. I have the green spaces, which is all of Waverley Borough Council's land assets, the ground maintenance contract, as well as tree safety and highway verges. Under community engagement and community safety, we have the community safety, which deals with antisocial behaviour and the like, as well as working with our voluntary and community sector, overseeing the grant process. I manage the care line service, which is a telecare process to help people, older people live more independently at home, and look after economic development. And Waverley Training Services, which is the training arm of Waverley Borough Council, delivering apprenticeships and the like for young people in the area. My proposal is to sort of touch on headlines of each of my service plans, but obviously I'll answer questions on any of the points covered in them. So I'll kick off with community safety, the CS1. The first thing on my cultural sort of assets on page two is basically to refresh the cultural strategy in line for next year. So next year, we'll be going for a whole new cultural strategy to ensure we have a cultural infrastructure as we go forward linked to the local plan. We will look to, on CS3, to get SLAs moving again, renewing the ones with Farnham Maltings, but bringing in new service level agreements for the next three years with Cranly Arts Centre and Godalming Museum. Under my leisure management contract, following obviously the administration's huge investment, capital investment within centres, now it's a case of make sure we're maximising that capital investment through increased maximisation of service and therefore profit share for the council. That's on CS4. But I think the key objective now is to use our leisure centres, perhaps as hubs, to reach outreach into our communities more effectively, really linking to the health and wellbeing agenda, which I touch on in CS5. I think we have the infrastructure now in each of our major towns to be able to deliver that. With regard to my ground maintenance and sort of land assets approach, I think one of the key objectives over the next year is to renegotiate the new agency agreement with Surrey County Council Highways. And that's to look after all the verges. We had, we took them over sort of three, three and a bit years ago, with perhaps a little bit of a discrepancy on mapping. We've now done a lot of work with Surrey. So I think the view now is to sort of renew that for the next four years. Also, under my land assets, we'll look to sort of really deliver our biodiversity responsibilities for key sites for our HLS grants. So looking at Frensham, Farnham Park, Webber Nature, those covered on CS9. I'm looking at time. And Paul, Chief Exec, touched on it earlier. I think under CS14, one of the key challenges is to create a new community centre for Farnham and surrounding area. And what we'll be doing over the next year is really looking to maximise plans and understanding of how best to deliver that. And with CS15, my care line team, we've got a bit of a challenge really on how the funding has been arranged over time. So there's a reduction in supporting people funding. But I think the objective of my service there is really to become self-sustaining and create a care line service that's there and almost able to operate without any subsidy. And last but not least, with Waverley Training Services, we're looking now to really refurbish what we call the pump house, which is where we deliver most of our courses and bring in additional classrooms to increase the number of learners. And really engage with a consultant now to make sure we hit Ofsted good for the next inspection, which we are expecting in 18 months' time. That was a brief summary. Hopefully that's helpful.
Thank you very much indeed, Kevin. I want to ask just a general comment of Paul, because I've noticed that in none of these reports, we have an equality assessment needed, equality impact assessment needed. Nobody has said yes, they've all said no. I find that strange. So I'll leave that with you. Okay? Thank you, members. Yes, Mrs Ellis?
Thank you, Chairman. Can I just ask two very quick questions?
Yes.
On CS8, where the success criteria, limited claims against council, do you actually mean fewer would be a success, an indication of success? That's just, you know, moot point really, I just thought that would be a better word. But my real question is about care line. And I understand that the way forward with care line is going to be a little bit different than we have up until now known. And I also understand that at the moment, what we do, we have a list of vulnerable people who receive a monthly visit from our care line officers. And that's going to be stopped. And I just wondered how we felt we were going to manage these vulnerable people. I know it's probably what you're going to say to me, is they're going to have to instigate the assistance that we're able to give them.
Can you go to a question, please, Mrs Ellis?
Sorry. So the question is, how are we going to manage that?
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Certainly, limited, fewer, I'm happy with fewer. That's certainly the objective of our proactive tree management, certainly to reduce the number of claims against the council. With regard to care line, yes, you're correct. We have what is called the enhanced service, which is regular visits on a monthly basis to people in our community. What I would say on that, it isn't actually need related. So it's not, so we've looked at need assessing those people. And we would say probably 30% of those people really do need that monthly visit. Others, it's not necessarily necessary. So what we are at the moment doing is working with the client base to inform them of the change of service. And to deal with the most vulnerable people on our side, we're looking to bring and work much more closely with our shelter housing colleagues and bringing it under one larger SLA where we have a hub and outreach to really support those people that need help in their community. So it's like, it's almost a way of merging them through the challenge of funding really. But it's helped us really come out with a better service, hopefully.
Thank you. Mr Ramsdale?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a general problem with the success criteria, that many of them don't seem to be criteria for success, but general ongoing actions. And Kelvin's the lucky man of coming first. Perhaps I can add specifically at CS11 on page 13, how development of an officer's job and employing somebody is a success criteria. I think there's an awful lot of criteria that we need for identifying and delivering services for older people, but I don't see how that is.
You're quite right.
Thank you, that councillor. Certainly with regard to CS11, it's quite a specific role. So where it's probably not very clear within this, the creation or extension of the personalised prevention project officer actually is someone who gives the capacity to run a number of community activities and projects under that remit. So what we probably should have on here is to deliver the action plan identified for that role to deliver. So in essence, it is a role that coordinates all of the PPP project activity.
I think, Kelvin, and possibly what councillor Ramsdale is suggesting, is maybe that should be under a resource implication as opposed to a criteria. Thank you. Mr Edwards?
Thank you, Chairman. Just two items on this. Going to CS15, you say the resource implications, officer time increase in surplus with regard to negotiating successfully implement phased increase. Do we currently have a surplus? Are we in, does that mean that we're currently making profit on the care line services? And the other one, I think it's already been raised, but I'll raise it again, is CS16, where it, excuse me, where it says that criteria, success criteria, programme equals what. Okay. So that was brought up by councillor Ellis, I think, previously.
Could you explain that, please?
Yeah. Certainly with the care line service, when we talk about surplus, we're talking about enough funds to ensure that all the support services that we need to run that are covered. So we will need to operate a higher income to cover the running costs. So the idea is, as funding reduces, we will need to increase the income from paying clients to ensure that we can still deliver the service. So it's not a surplus as such. With regard to, yes, it's a bit of a cut and paste error, I do apologise on the programme equals. I will correct that on the next one.
Thank you very much. I've got two more speakers and then we'll move on to the next item. And that is, Mr Byham?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Another question on care line. Just an anecdotal situation, one of the people in my village chose to return their telecare system because they thought it was too expensive and they didn't need it. Her son then found an alternate source, which was 30% cheaper.
Mr Byham, what has that got to do with the plans that we're looking at?
I'm wondering whether we are, should be outsourcing some of our services in a different way.
Thank you. That makes some sense. I'll take Mrs Ellis and then perhaps Mr Mills' answer. Mrs Ellis?
Thank you, Chairman. I'll be very brief on CS15 again with regard to the care line service. Could you please confirm to me, because I'm sorry it's not very clear, that those vulnerable members of the community will not be forced to not use the service, sorry, I'm not doing that very well, because they can't afford to? Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Mills?
Thank you, Chairman. With regard to other competitors that operate within the service, you can find lower monthly payments, but there's an upfront cost. We would say we will carry out a full competitor analysis to ensure that we offer the best as we can for the residents of Waverley. We not only don't charge any upfront cost for the care line equipment, we also offer ongoing maintenance that a lot of other competitors, for want of a better description, don't. With regard to ensuring that we don't reduce the support to our vulnerable adults in our community, it's quite the opposite. The objective over the next year is really to help many more and get the message out there that there are these care line facilities, telecare equipment that can really help people live independently. And our objective is really to go from, well, we have circa 2,000 clients at the moment, our objective is really almost to try and double that over the next year, because we think there is a latent need and this can really help.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to the next section, but could I ask you, Mr Mills, to look at CS3? Because the success criteria outcomes do not make sense. You talk about museum grant, we're talking about maltings grant. So could you look at that and put that in the right order? Okay. I'm sorry, I'm doing this quite quickly, but there's a lot to get through. If we've got any time at the end, then come in again, all right? Right. Who is going next? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman. Customer IT and Office Services Service Plan is set out between pages 19 and 26. My service area supplies a range of important support services, notably IT and property, facilities management, engineering and sustainability. The service plan has 31 actions under 11 objectives. And in the time available, I'd like to highlight the following. So on page 20, under corporate property, CNO 1 to 8, it's around support to the housing service in the council's priority for the development of affordable housing. And secondly, strategic advice and guidance on land and property acquisitions, disposals and development. The second objective I'd like to flag up is the robust health and safety procedures, which is at foot of page 21, Actions CNO 11 and 12. The actions specified are in recognition that for non-housing properties, we need robust and resilient data, which is managed and organised to ensure that we are meeting health and safety requirements and maintaining our buildings properly. If I could move on to the engineering service, which is on page 22, and Actions CNO 13 to 16, and that's specifically around land drainage and flooding. And this is around providing clarity on the council's responsibilities for both the public and the new council and councillors, and also providing data on the condition of Waverley-owned drainage assets. So two strands to that particular set of actions. Moving on, on IT, on page 22, CNO 17 to 22, the first objective is a review of data communications options, which would include consideration of the use of the Surrey data centre. I would say that this particular action is not just about cost saving, but also around risk, performance and resilience. The second proposal within the IT actions is around services identifying mobile working solutions that provide a service cost and/or service benefit, so savings and/or service benefits in those areas. The other objectives within the service plan are to review office cleaning, to review the staff restaurant service, the feasibility and service benefit of scanning all incoming mail, and then into sustainability, where we're looking at new carbon management targets and identifying the support to housing and planning, read the provision of sustainable homes. Thank you, Chairman. Happy to take questions.
Thank you very much indeed. Could I, again, a general comment, could I please ask you to look at your success criteria? Because some of the success criteria are in fact resource implications. So we need to get them actually in the right place. I would also like you to look at, in looking at IT, what you are going to do for members to improve their communications. I see nothing in there about that. So could you please look at that when taking this plan forward? Mr Gates?
Thank you, Chairman. Well, you've said what I was going to say on CO 11 and 12. Surely the success criteria is actually compile a database, not staff time required to carry it out. However, that wasn't my main point. This may come up elsewhere, but I shall take every opportunity to mention it. Under carbon management, I realise we don't go down to detail, where is photovoltaic panels? Where does that fit into this, please?
Thank you.
It may come up again.
I'm sure it will, Mr Gates. I'm going to take a couple more questions and then ask for the answers. Mrs Ellis?
Thank you, Chairman. CO 17, in particular, is, the success criteria is the action. But CO 23 concerns me. The action is both the action and the success criteria in the same. So the review of the office cleaning programme is the action, but ensure the most effective and appropriate methods are in place, surely is the success criteria. It's just in the interpretation, but it makes it a little bit of a nonsense. And CO 24, I can't see that there's any savings identified in the success criteria. And I think that that's probably the aim. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed, Mrs Ellis. And Mr Edwards?
Thank you, Chairman. Just to go back to CR 17, I think the success criteria should read, improve knowledge of costs of service, because that's what you're doing. And again, on CNO 21, with reference to value for money, it should be implemented, I think it should be implementation of projects with the delivery of service and cost benefits And I think CNO 22, the criteria, success criteria, should be to present completed programme for approval, not report to IT Strategy Group. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr Edwards. Mr Standing, would you like to address those questions?
Thank you, Chairman. Firstly, a comment with regard to Members IT. I think that's something we'll be looking at before this year. In other words, in time for the new councillors coming in, in 2015. So we'd be reviewing the arrangements in time for that. So it doesn't feature here, but I take your point on that.
I hear what you say, Mr Standing. Say no more than that.
Thank you, Chairman. PV panels, I think councillor Gates mentioned, and that certainly will feature within the support that we give to the housing service and the benefits therein. And I think there's particularly a scheme with regard to sheltered housing units that we're looking at during the course of next year. So we haven't set out every single action that is included within the service plan because they've been enormously long. But within those sustainable objectives that are set out there, the support to housing in PV panels will be part of that. Members IT, I've mentioned. The cost saving on cleaning on CO 24, I'm not sure. I've been here too long, probably, Chairman. I remember times before when we've had cost savings on office cleaning and it's been a disaster. The key component in cleaning is staff costs. And we've come unstuck in the past when we've not provided enough money for it. I think it's more around this review in looking at the method that are used for cleaning, whether it's the most effective method and whether or not we're actually meeting cleaning standards. So there may be an element of cost saving as well, because at the moment, we do it in-house and we will look at alternatives, but not necessarily is all I'd say on that.
Thank you. Thank you very much indeed. There's one thing I thought about on this when you were talking there, and I can't remember what it was now, so not to worry, it can't be important. Anybody else? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr Ellis, I didn't see you.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I'm looking at page 22, engineering service, and there's a lot there about drainage. I don't actually see in amongst the success criteria, any possibility of actually improving land drainage where it is the responsibility of the Borough Council. I wonder if there might be something in there that Mr Standing could perhaps slip in for us?
Thank you very much indeed. If you could consider that, Mr Standing?
Will do, Chairman.
If you've got a response, it would be helpful.
The response I'd have is that we do have a capital provision within next year's programme subject to the council for £25,000 worth of drainage improvement works on our own.
Thank you. I thought of what it was I wanted to say, and that was, why are we doing the staff restaurant service again?
I think there's a cost to the council and I think it is something that needs to be looked at. There is a cost in providing that service and I think it is something that does need to be considered.
Okay. And I don't see locality offices down here. They're usually down on the land?
In terms of locality offices now, we have a local office service at Cranly and at Hazelmeir. And that service that's provided from those two areas is purely housing, is purely benefit service. And the Hazelmeir office is also used as a drop-in by housing staff as well. But we don't have locality office staff anymore, other than a single member of staff at Farnham.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr Standing. Shall we move on to the next area? Is it Mr Anderton? Head of Service?
Thank you, Chairman. So the environmental services service plan starts on page 27. Environmental Services is divided into four main sections, waste recycling and street cleaning, environmental health, which includes environmental protection, food hygiene, contaminated land and air quality, parking services and emergency planning and resilience. So turning to page 28, I start with a sort of overarching theme around customer services. So we should be focusing on developing an improved and more joined-up customer service function across the whole service, developing greater customer insight and embedding the council's corporate service standards. Then I move across to the specific team areas. Environmental Health on page 29. The main focus here will be about building on the efficiency and effectiveness of the service, primarily through the application of technology. Roger recently mentioned mobile working and the environmental health service is currently trialling a mobile working app for food inspections. And we'll also be looking at the implementation of noise apps, among other things. Alongside that, there'll be the progressing of a number of other projects around air quality and contaminated land specifically, and also the development of primary authority partnerships. Onto page 31, Waste and Recycling. We'll be looking at building on the good work of the last couple of years and further improving the cleanliness of the borough and public perception of the street cleaning service by continuing to deliver the agreed recommendations of the 2012 Street Cleaning Review. And there will be a big focus on building on the success of the Dry Recycling and Food Waste Collection Service and the Garden Waste Subscription Service. Waste Collection Service and the Garden Waste Subscription Service, primarily focusing on improved communications and behaviour change, with a view to further increasing recycling rates and reducing the volume of waste that goes to landfill. Then on to page 33. The Parking Service. Similarly to environmental health, there's a big focus on technology, building on efficiencies that we've achieved to date, and using new technologies such as the pay-by-phone system that was implemented across the borough back in December, and a number of back-office systems that improve the efficiency of the service as a whole, and enable us to be more intelligent about the way in which we manage that service. And we will also be delivering a number of agreed car parking projects in terms of capital investment in the infrastructure that's available across the borough for parking. And finally, on to page 35. Emergency Planning and Resilience. We'll be looking at delivering a number of key projects in emergency planning and business continuity, particularly around developing and updating some specific emergency response plans, and developing a new corporate business continuity plan, and out of that, delivering training and an exercise programme, and creating a greater level of publicity and awareness around our emergency planning responsibility as an authority.
Thank you very much indeed. Right, questions? Mrs Coburn?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I just got a question on ES 2.4, on air quality. As long as I've been on this council, we've been talking about monitoring air quality, and the action is to protect the health through the quality of the air they breathe. I just wonder when we're going to move from monitoring air quality, which I don't actually think is a success criteria, or our success is criterion, and I just wondered, you know, when we're going to move from that next stage from monitoring to actually improving?
Thank you. I'll take, Paddy Blackdon, did you, no, sorry. Who was the next one? Mr Gates, and then?
Mr Lee.
Mr Lee, and then I'll take Mr Ramsdale. And then if you can make a note of the questions. Thank you. Right, Mr Gates.
I jumped the queue.
It doesn't matter.
I've read often that the EU is going to introduce the need for us to break up our recycling into 403 different boxes. How will that affect, if at all, our own approach, which is to put it all in one? Thank you.
Thank you. Who is next? Mrs Lee?
Thank you, Chairman. The phrase, a more joined-up customer services function, can I just check whether that is between the teams within environmental services, or does it go beyond environmental services and include other departments where there is some sort of overlap?
Thank you. I'd like to see members mention somewhere in here about joined-up thinking. And Mr Ramsdale?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to invite you to review your success criteria measures for ES 2.3, 2.4, and 2.5. They mean to me like achieving national guidelines and a series of actions. Unlike the previous council, I've been very frustrated that we're still monitoring and not setting targets or success criteria of what we'll achieve. Moving further down, is ES 5.4 the review and update car park review? Is that including looking at initiatives for a period of free car parking? I think there's been lots of clamour for first 20 minutes or half an hour. And then finally, perhaps you could explain ES 6.1, the last bullet point, which says, replacement of emergency store and key officer resources to allow a strengthened response to emergencies. So we get rid of the store and some of the people, and we become stronger. Okay.
Thank you very much indeed. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr Blackdon, did?
Mr Blackdon, councillor Blackdon, are you? No, sorry.
All right, we seem to have you, we keep putting your name down, you see, we're...
Ah, that's what it is.
Right, thank you. Would you like to respond to those questions, please?
Thank you, Chairman. I shall start with councillor Coburn's question around air quality. The issue of air quality in Waverley is entirely traffic-related. It's an entirely traffic-related air quality issue. It's around particulates and diesel emissions in particular. As a consequence of that, whilst we as a Borough Council are statutally required to monitor and develop an action plan, we have limited teeth in terms of actually making a difference to the air quality situation within the borough. So what we do, and we will continue to do, is work closely with colleagues from the County Council to look at potential highway solutions. But as I'm sure you can imagine, the majority of those highway solutions come at a great cost, and the implementation or otherwise of those solutions does not rest with this council. So we will continue to monitor it because we're statutally required to, but in terms of actually making a difference, our capacity is limited. Moving on to the question around recycling and mixed recycling. The European Waste Framework Directive does indeed require, as of the 1st of January, local authorities to collect recycling in separate containers unless considered technically, environmentally, and economically not practicable to do so. And at the moment, the Surrey Waste Partnership and all the boroughs in it have been doing a lot of work to build, to look at the case and to develop a case to demonstrate that what we are doing is the most technically, environmentally, and economically practicable way to provide the service. And a report on that will be coming forward through executive in February to present our case. Joined-up customer services function, at present, every aspect of the environmental services function is, has a customer services function delivered by the same team. We're looking at further integrating that with some aspects of grounds maintenance and verge maintenance in particular from Kelvin's team, because, as you say, there's a lot of synergy there, and we get a lot of inquiries from residents who don't understand why they need to speak to different teams for those two functions. So we're looking at merging those in due course. Councillor Ramsdale, I will certainly look at those success criteria that you've flagged. The review of the car park strategy, free parking and requests for free parking are always high on the agenda, and we will continue to look at any requests that come forward with a view to seeing how we can make those practically possible. And the emergency store, yes, I will re-look at the wording, but essentially what we've done is we've done a stock sake of the emergency store. We're looking at replacing a lot of the equipment within there, and ensuring that we have sufficient officer resources to ensure that we have a strong response should another emergency occur in the future.
Thank you very much indeed. Could I just add one other thing for you to look at? And you may have looked at it and discounted it, but pay on exit for a car park, so that we have one that we trial. Okay? Thank you. Anybody else? In which case I'll move on. Right, we're now on to finance. Peter Vickers? Over to you, I think.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm going to give an overview of the Financial Services Service Plan, which is page 37 to 44. The plan covers a wide range of services. The services covered by the plan are financial management and accounting team, covering budget management, financial reporting, and transaction processing; employee services consisting of core business functions such as insurance, payroll, staff training and development; absence management and recruitment; the benefit service, which ensures people in need of financial help with their rent and council tax are assisted and receive a quality service; and the revenue service, responsible for maximising council tax, business rates collection, and summary debt recovery. Each of these services are quite different in function. However, there are some common aspects to service delivery. This year, the service plan focused on specific themes that are overarching for services, and builds upon the achievements from the past year. The themes are firstly, maximising financial resources and minimising our financial risk to maintain our service levels. For example, ensuring we have a robust financial strategy that is focused upon delivering a sustainable and robust plan for Waverley's financial resources. That anticipates the impact of future financial pressures and delivery of corporate plan priorities. This particular example's continuation from previous year, and it's ultimately very important to this council that we do focus on this. The second theme is building service capacity and resilience through development of people, teams, business process, and use of information technologies. For example, aligning resource and business process to focus on the desired outcomes listed in the service plan's success criteria and performance measures on the right-hand column of the service plans, to ensure our systems give added value to the business that we undertake. The third theme within the service plan is managing service change through careful review, reflection, and forward planning. This year, the benefit service continues to move towards universal credit, and the transfer of benefit fraud investigation to DWP. These are quite significant changes for the council, and these changes will require careful planning, so that all non-external changes in funding and government policy are fully analysed, understood, and planned before we get involved in too much detail. The specific actions relating to these overarching themes are detailed in the service plan, as I say, on 37 to 44. I welcome your comments and questions.
Thank you very much indeed. Questions, Members? Mrs Else?
Thank you, Chairman. F19 talks about the introduction of electronic appraisal systems. Are we really going to be managing our staff electronically? In my experience and view, one-to-ones are organic, they should be held between people and not between a person and a computer. But that's just my opinion. So if you could tell me if we are actually seriously going to be performing appraisals and one-to-ones? And just one other thing, F20, full online recruitment functionality, how on earth does that work? Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. I'm going to take several more speakers, and then ask Mr Vickers to come back. Mr Ramsdale?
Thank you, Chairman. First, to F4, both here and in the housing section. I think it's important we identify some of the work that I think's been discussed with MERS about an interface from Agresso to Orchard, and for the need to introduce electronic invoicing in these high-volume situations. Certainly don't want to repeat the crazy situation, we've got four years' worth of invoices waiting to be settled.
Thank you.
Turn over the page, and at F12, we talk about action on council tax. Do we take proactive action on people who were naughty payers or slow payers last year to get in early and remind them about the need to be up to date? I'd like to see that sort of proactiveness. Turning the page again to F17. I'm puzzled as to how the increased proportion of claims processed over the counter rather than by phone or by post is a success. Certainly by previous comments, it seems to be doing more and more electric and automated rather than asking people to come in. Can I also ask you to review the success criteria, F19? I don't think feedback from staff and councillors would be a success criteria for things like additional payroll functions and online councillors' mileage claims. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Monroe.
Thank you, Chairman. I wonder if we could possibly include something about the need to maintain or indeed improve our income streams as much as possible. A lot of, my impression is, a lot of departments and officers are very, very good at that, but maybe something more coordinated is required, or maybe not, to make sure that we actually set our fees and charges, for instance, at a level which will maximise income, there are constraints, and all that sort of thing. I think it all needs to be pulled together.
Thank you very much indeed. Anybody else before I ask Mr Vickers to respond? Right, Peter.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll just take them in order. Now, the electronic appraisal system, actually is part of our performance, will form a genuine part of our performance management process. But we do one-to-ones, and they are organic, literally as they are, one-to-one. But the idea of having an electronic appraisal system is, it replaces a lot of paper and a paper chase that allows a better interaction between the management and the staff within the line management process to capture information and to share that information as it's captured in an organised way that actually reduces a lot of admin time, and also allows a lot more data analysis to take place in the information that's captured, that otherwise becomes, it's a paper-based process requiring somebody to retype a lot of information that is unnecessary. It's a case of capturing the information once, and then we can use it. Moving on, the online recruitment, how does it work? Again, it's about capturing information once and giving people the easiest access into our systems as possible from outside the authority when they wish to apply for jobs. The idea is, it allows people to provide us with information without having to go through a whole paper chase again of typing things up and then sending them in by post. They can submit them online. It means our officers can access that information online. There's minimal keyboard work required, which then increases our capacity within our team, so improves our efficiency as a council, and improves our value for money. Going to F4, the Orchard interface. The interface, there's a capital bid in next year's budget to cover the interface. Before the interface happens, there'll be an appraisal of exactly what the specification is and the purposes of that specification, to make sure that we get it right. And we're not just capturing information for information's sake. Saying that, there are advantages to having an interface between Orchard and Agresso, the finance system, but we want to make sure we get it right before we actually dive into spending the money. So hopefully that's answering the question. A review of the debts. The debts are reviewed, and when people are getting behind, we have a process that we use to follow up. We don't send any special kind of reminders to people that are behind when we do the billing. Every year, we set the billing out within the billing process, once council tax approved, and business rates as well. And we have a recovery team that actually picks up on people that get behind, and we follow due process to recover monies. And we have to go through, through Members and through legal, through the court system where necessary. I think F17, reading that, is actually, it's just, we need some clarity actually in what we're actually saying. The success criteria is actually saying, or supposed to be saying, improved efficiency of the claims that have been processed over the counter. So I'll make sure that gets amended to reflect that. I'm sorry, the last question, there was something to do with income streams. Could I just have a repeat of that, please?
Mr Monroe, could you just repeat your last question?
Yes, in so many words. While there is a lot of individual efforts to make quite sure that we get as much income as possible through fees and charges, et cetera, I'm not convinced that this has got the sort of corporate backing behind it, so as to maximise our income where it's proportionate, as it should be. And I'm suggesting there should be a specific project plan to look at this.
Can I suggest that in fact we word it such that it is, one of the corporate objectives is to increase and identify areas where we can increase our income? And we may have to think outside the box.
Absolutely, Chairman, thank you.
Is that all right? Fine, thank you very much indeed. If nobody else has got any more questions, I'll move on to the next area. Right, we're into Hugh Wagstaff and Jane Embrown. We have a double act now.
Yes, yeah, thank you.
Right, over to you.
Thank you.
We're on page 45.
That's right, okay. Our housing service plan identifies the main priorities and activities for both the housing operation... operations and the strategic housing and delivery services, and what we're going to deliver in the year ahead and set our direction for the next five years. As heads of service, you and I would both like to thank our present and past portfolio holders for their involvement in preparation of this service plan. So we're building on our service plan from last year and have included a number of actions that are repeated in order to provide a focus for our staff on the key outcomes that we are seeking to deliver to our customers. Our intention for this service plan has been to capture our goals and aspirations and provide an overarching plan for how we can deliver an effective and efficient housing service. It's based on feedback from our tenants' panel, from tenants through surveys and customer feedback, from staff, and from our portfolio holders. So rather than going through the individual actions, the priorities and goals and aspirations that we've been seeking to address in our service plan are to provide an excellent customer service striving to get things right first time and to keep complaints to a minimum, to improve our communication so that our service meets the needs of our tenants and our residents, to make sure that health and safety is a key component in everything that we do, to invest in new council homes and to improve and maintain our existing homes, to encourage feedback on service delivery and review our processes, to ensure we can improve our service, our customer satisfaction, and deliver efficiencies. We want to embed a culture of performance management and a high performance of our staff, to strengthen our contract management, to ensure good value is achieved in all our activities, and to continue to work with members to achieve our objectives.
So Chair, to conclude, the overriding drivers of our service plan could be summarised in our five Cs. The first one is customers. Delivering excellent customer service is the forefront of our plan, and it'd be good to receive feedback from members if that comes through in the plan. The second C is compliance, it's particular two areas, compliance with health and safety and also about compliance with policy and procedures which are key to delivering the first fix, getting things right first time. The third C is consolidation. It's a consolidation of last year's plan, so for example, it is H two point four, and that's all about reinforcing the staff structure that was implemented in twenty fourteen. H two point five is about continuous improvement of the processes, again, implemented in twenty fourteen. The fourth C is capacity, and that's to maximise our capacity. In particular, we want to continue reinvesting or reinvesting in our T, and that is, for example, H six point two. There's also a culture change, and particularly the big culture change we want within housing is about performance management. That's the performance management of our staff and the performance management of our contractors, which again will deliver many of the objectives within the plan. So therefore, this is really a challenging service plan, but with the commitment of members, help of our tenants and residents, and the hard work from our staff, we are looking forward to the year ahead. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Can you ensure somewhere in the plan that you put something in about MERS and the ability to actually get our money and our invoices on time? Thank you. We're compiling a list here. Mr Monroe, your hammer's up.
I think I've jumped the queue, but thank you very much.
It doesn't matter, everybody will be here.
I wonder whether two aspects could be made more explicit. The first is the management of our estates as a whole, to improve not just the individual houses within them, which I think actually we do very well, but the actual, the general environment, and I do say that in the context, I think we've improved in that in the last two years a lot. And the second one is the general problem of noise, nuisance, unneighbourly neighbours. Again, that's a source of all the complaints to me, frankly, it's not the roof leaking because we've got that, but you get the point, I'm sure, yeah.
Thank you. I'm now going to take Mr Gates.
Thank you. I wonder if the team would agree with me that under H four point five, invest in stock improvement programmes should include, including consideration of the installation of PV panels on existing homes, and the success criteria should include having installed a agreed number, I won't give it off the top of my head, but five hundred would be good, on our existing homes. Thank you, Chairman.
Mr Gates, nobody would dare argue with you on this issue. Mr Byham? Oh, sorry, my list is out.
Well, thank you very much. Well, following on from Richard Gates's point, I was going to ask the question, and I will ask the question of whether we have considered on new builds having integrated PV panels on the roof. You can now get them shaped like tiles, they look much better, and if you're building a new house with new roof, then I suggest that is a good way of doing. Having said that, I don't know the costs.
So are you asking for it to be included in the plans?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Mrs Els?
Thank you. H one one, I mean, I'm intrigued with a half a percent increase in customer satisfaction, and I just wondered how you arrived at half a percent, and there might be a good reason for it. I would also like to know, H one seven, provide tenants with a single contact number for their inquiries. You're going to launch a new customer contact number and ensure eighty percent of calls get routed through. I'd like to know what happens to the other twenty percent. And if I may, Chairman, H, it always worries me, H two four, you're going to, staff take responsibility for their roles. I don't like to see that really as an action, I think that's something that we should be assured of as a given. So that just worries me, it's not a question, sorry, it's a statement. H two five, ensure clear processes and procedures are in place to enable staff to deliver a consistent service. It's non-specific, is there a particular area, has it been, a particular area been identified? And if I might just do one more, please, H two, H six two, H six four, and H six five, I'm just, you know, why have we picked two new services for each of those that you're going to identify? I mean, should we just, is that the way we do it? Or do we just try and identify however many new services might be identified and implemented? It just intrigues me that it's sort of one size fits all there. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Mr Ramsdale?
Thank you, Chairman. I was also going to pick up on the sort of specificness of some of your success criteria, and actually thank you for it. I think it's a job well done, and that's exactly what I'd like to see, and I'd like to be coming back in a year's time and say, did you achieve two in each of these places? I do wonder if the cut and paste has rather got overzealous on copying, identifying, and implementing at least two new services, but I trust it's cumulative.
Thank you very much, Mr Ramsdale. Mr Edwards?
Just to go back to on item H two four, I think the success criteria should read, teams' clear understanding of roles. That makes a lot more sense, and it makes it quite clear because sometimes roles can get, yeah, mixed up, and people don't understand who's responsible for what, so it's quite a good success criteria, in my opinion. Thank you.
I think in this one, Mr Edwards, we're talking about embedding a revised staff structure, and it's embedding those roles within the new structure. Thank you. Can I have an officer reply to all this? Mr Wagstaff?
Perhaps go through the list. H one point one, I think we're going to have to review what that point five is, what's the increase of what, so can we take that one away?
Yes, please.
Apologies for that. And again, H one point seven was a sort of, a target that we took as a sort of a standard target that we should aim for. I mean, we haven't actually investigated this single contact number, what that's going to actually mean and what's that going to actually look like, but it was about trying to develop some kind of a measure. So again, I think we're trying to go back to actually put measures in place, but again, this measure clearly needs some work being done on it. Again, the mention about the ASB, antisocial behaviour and noise, and again, that, we understand that that's part of some of the procedures that we need to improve on, so for example, that would be one of the ones in H two point five that was highlighted, would be one of the processes we need to review and have, and we're going to buy some IT around helping manage that system. And I think you're correct on H six point four and six point five, bit of cut and paste problems there which we need to rectify. PV panels, I mean, we have considered that, when the budget is looked at by the committee, you'll see we have substantial reinvestment in quite basic things in our stock. Our stock has, despite the words of councillor Monroe, our stock does have some damp, some key dampness issues, and so it's about prioritising, and at the moment, we're prioritising on the basics within our stock in terms of reinvestment. So the programme going forward for next year will focus on the key areas of our stock to keep them watertight and warm and safe for our residents. So at the moment, PV panels is not within the budget.
Is that it? Thank you very much indeed. Anybody else before I move on to the next section? Don't forget, you can come back afterwards because we'll have some time. We now move on to corporate governance. Mr Peller?
Yes, Chairman, the summary of services in our team are set out on page fifty-three and the actions on page fifty-four. We are obviously a small service with very succinct objectives. Elections team plays a central role in local democracy, but the whole service is really about community confidence in the way that Waverley does things, ranging from value for money with the audit service to member conduct and the complaint service offers almost like a sort of internal ombudsman service across the whole range of services. Carrying on with that, there are obviously references in lots of other service plans to the sort of activities that we'll be supporting. For instance, finance have been talking about benefits changes for the universal credit system, we want to set up some sort of investigation capacity within Waverley because we feel that's very important given our range of services. Also, just as an example, housing have talked about what they want to do on complaints, very keen to improve the responsiveness of the complaint service and to show to people that we do learn from when things don't go quite as well as we'd hope, and the committees agreed recently an updated overall corporate procedure. To go through then the objectives, in terms of the monitoring officer, it's seen as very important that right as soon as members have been elected that they are briefed fully about the significance of member standards of conduct. So it's an important component of the induction process, both for Waverley and for town council and parish council members. I'd like to thank councillors over the year, past few years, for their cooperation when they have had to make investigations into complaints about conduct, and also thank the chairman of the panel for his support and our two independent persons. The biggest challenges we face in elections this year, as I think has been touched on already, we've got a huge change to individual electoral registration instead of head of household registration. It's a sort of change that happens about once every hundred years, though I gather we are out of step with most modern democracies, so it had to happen, but as I was saying to the chairman, picking the year before a triple or quadruple election shows either huge ambition or total lack of understanding of the risks, but there you go.
Stupidities.
Yeah, quite. The aim we've set out is to minimise the reduction in overall electoral registration numbers. I have heard some huge figures quoted for the rest of the country. There is a small reduction at the moment, but we're working very hard to recover that so that we continue with the previous very high levels of registration. You're all aware there's at least a triple poll coming up in May, possibly a quadruple poll if the police and prime commissioner goes ahead with his suggestions about increasing his precept, and that'll be a huge logistical task setting up. It's the first triple election I've ever known, let alone quadruple, and also a very lengthy series of counts afterwards, and we'll obviously be asking for members' understanding that that can't happen within a day or so as it normally does. We've also got a rolling programme, together with the planning service, which Matthew will go on to later, of much smaller but still important neighbourhood plan referenda for towns and parishes, so that the team will be extremely busy. On audit, we've talked already about fighting fraud locally under the housing service plan, and that's a very important area. It's not just financial fraud. Tenancy fraud in effect deprives people who've got a legitimate case to have a house, a tenancy, and they've been on the waiting list, and somebody else deprives them of that, so we see that as really important, and it's part of the thing I referred to last year, the government's approach of fighting fraud locally. There are also other activities where we're just supporting important parts of democracy, such as supporting the mayoralty and continuing to develop the mayoralty and focus on events in the borough, and the important role that the mayoralty plays in supporting local organisations.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr Peller. Any questions? Right, I've got two. Sorry about that. At a recent corporate meeting, we did talk about the military covenant, and I see nothing in here about what action plan there is going to be to do with the military covenant, and secondly, I see nothing in here, which I believe to be a corporate governance issue, about continual training of councillors. Because whilst we might do it at the beginning of the four-year term, there are things that happen, like antisocial behaviour, the Crime Act, the Care Act, and all of these sorts of things, which members do need to be informed about, but there is nothing in here that you are going to do any programming at all for members about training. So could I ask you to consider that? If there's nothing else, we will then move on to the one that's going to take the next two hours, planning. Mr Evans?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, the planning service. Just a very brief overview of the core functions of the service. Clearly, the statutory planning function of determining planning applications and updating planning policy. The priorities in the way forward heavily influenced by clearly the council's own corporate plan, but also the government's agenda for growth. What that has identified over the last year is very significant increases in workload, particularly in the development control team, and I anticipate that continuing into the next financial year. The housing enabling team, a very small team which but supports the delivery of affordable housing through the section one oh six process and also through rule exceptions, and that team works very closely with Jane and Hugh's team. And finally, as part of the overview, just to remind the building control team, too often perhaps a little bit of a Cinderella service, but has unique challenges because it works in a competitive market, as there are alternative providers of that service which developers can use. We've undertaken a major review of that service over the last year, and a key focus will be developing and delivering an action plan to increase market share and make that service resilient in the long term. So just turning over to the key outcomes. The first outcome relates to increasing the supply of housing to meet Waverley's needs, including affordable housing, and that will be driven in part through the development control process, but also through continuing with the work on the local plan and supporting those parish councils who want to undertake neighbourhood plans so that they can identify their own need and plan for that. The second core outcome is supporting the needs of businesses, and it's important that there's a positive framework for economic growth which supports existing and new businesses. And again, that will be done primarily through the local plan, through planning applications, and through neighbourhood plans by those parishes who wish to undertake them. The next key outcome, and I think this goes to the heart of what we should be doing as a planning service, and that's promoting and celebrating excellence in design and improving the public realm. So again, that will be done through the development control process, and will continue with a programme of design training for officers, which we started this year, together with discreet bits of work around conservation area reviews, tree preservation order reviews where necessary, and continuing our work with local communities on buildings of local merit. And worth highlighting that this will be the year, because we only undertake it every half of the year, our design awards, which is a good opportunity to celebrate the quality of new development. of new development. Just moving on to the next outcome, a key issue I think for members and for the council, and that's putting in place adequate infrastructure to support new development. And the key action on that will be preparing a community infrastructure levy to replace the current policy on planning infrastructure contributions, heavily aligned with progress on the local plan, but the key bit of work for the policy team. And finally, as I mentioned earlier, a key outcome is to secure a resilient building control team, and that will be done by implementing a building control business plan, and I'm hoping that within the next few days we'll have been successful in recruiting a business manager to take that service forward. I think that's it, chairman.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr Evans. Members, Mrs Els.
Thank you. I wonder if you could explain for me the difference between PL 3 and PL 5, please.
I'm going to take several, Matthew. Mr Storey?
Thank you, chairman. I don't see anything in here about the critical situation we have with SANGs in Farnham and improving that position.
Thank you. Mr Munro?
Could we have something on enforcement, please?
Speedier.
Speedier and more successful.
Thank you very much, Mr Storey.
Easy to say.
Yeah, I know, I know. But if we don't highlight them, we'll forget them. And also, Mr Ramsdale?
Thank you, chairman. If I could raise a number of points. Firstly, on PL 11, the CIL, I wonder if we could include something that identifies what SIL money and indeed Section 106 money is used for. It has to be used for specific improvements in the area or indeed returned to the developer. And that way, we could tell our public, one of the positive sides of new development being how these funds have been used and they're not just being lost in a black hole.
I hear what you say, Mr Ramsdale, but I don't think it forms part of the action plan. That's really for information.
I was suggesting an action to identify that information and have it available to our communications people. Reflecting some of my recent experience with some of our constituents, could we do more, please, to reduce or remove delays that happen in the application processes? Thirdly, could we improve the feedback and the information that's given to applicants? If the deadline's overrun, can we let them know why it's overrun and indeed what will happen next? Four, are we doing anything to review or look at actions from appeal decisions that go against us and then share what happened or what went wrong so that we don't repeat it on further applications and incur yet more costs of things going to appeal that perhaps don't need to? And then five, it strikes me that the department needs to have some capability to vary its size according to how busy it's going to be. We've gone through a rather quiet period for planning applications. I'm quite sure there's a head of steam being delivered. Are you planning ahead to do that, or are we simply going to wait for reaction downstream? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mrs Els. Did you? Oh, thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Mrs Forachewski. I've got it right.
You did, thank you, chairman. Thank you, madam chair. I see nothing in here about exception sites outside the settlement boundaries, and I would like to see that addressed.
Thank you. Then if there's nobody else, Mr Evans, could you give us answers to all those questions?
I will, chairman. I'll try not to be too harsh. The first thing is PL 3 and PL 5, is there duplication? Well, the reason why we've done that is because the outcomes are driven towards specific requirements. So the PL 1 to 3 is about housing, PL 5 is about supporting businesses. So I think they need to reflect the particular outcome. I accept it looks like a certain amount of duplication. SANG, the delivery of additional SANG clearly is fundamental to the local plan, so it sits within the local plan, project plan and milestones. Whether it needs a specific reference or not, I'm not so sure, because there's an awful lot of different elements of the local plan, and there is a detailed project plan which includes SANG. Enforcement, valid point that we don't include enforcement. We do have an adopted enforcement plan. We do have performance indicators which are closely scrutinised by the performance subcommittee and by this committee, but certainly I accept the point about perhaps we should do more about celebrating successful enforcement and making the wider public aware of the very good work which the team does. PL 11, this is the issue about the list of infrastructure projects. Fundamental to being successful in relation to SIL, Community Infrastructure Levy, is having an infrastructure plan in place which will identify all the key elements of infrastructure which will be delivered via development contributions. That's work in progress, not least because it's dependent significantly on the level of growth and the location of growth which forms part of the local plan, but certainly it's important to make sure that the public are both engaged in coming up with that list and are aware of it. So the broader comment about reducing delays in planning applications and feeding back to customers, points well made. Our performance on planning applications, again, is tested and reviewed by the subcommittee and this committee, and by and large, performance remains good on planning applications. We've put a lot of priority on that in the last few years. I accept that sometimes we don't feed back as well as we could do to customers, whether that's an action for this service plan or just part of our focus on customer feedback. I'm not so sure, but I accept the point that as a customer-facing service, our relationship with our customers is absolutely fundamental. Reports, learning from, I'm sorry, appeals, learnings from appeals and decisions which go with us and against us. We do do a report which goes to the area development control committees, which gives very detailed analysis of appeals. It doesn't go elsewhere, but it certainly is in front of the development control committees, and I think that's a useful opportunity for discussion by members and by officers about how we can improve on development control performance. Again, there's a performance indicator which goes to the subcommittee and this size. The next point, a very important point about how we respond to capacity and increase in planning applications. I think we've been very nimble in the last year or so in addressing that. We do take on agency staff for short-term capacity issues, but the executive have also been very supportive over the last year in increasing overall establishment and capacity, so we've dealt with that. And certainly, we don't sit and wait for applications to come, we do make sure that we're planning ahead for that. And the final point relates to rural exception sites. There is a reference, I think, on the front page, the work which the housing enabling team do. They go out and they work with parish councils and support rural exception sites. If members feel that needs more priority in the plan, clearly I'm happy to put that in. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much indeed. Anybody else? Then in which case, I'm going to move on to Mr Taylor.
Thank you, madam chair. The service plan for policy and governance starts on page 59. Policy and governance is comprised of five teams: democratic services, licensing, legal services and land charges, corporate policy and communications and PR. Page 59 of the service plan identifies the core objectives for each of those teams, and pages 60 to 65 outlines the actions to be undertaken to deliver those objectives. So before I go into some detail, a word on the principles. There's three principles at the core of policy and governance as a service: supporting good planning at Waverley, ensuring good decision-making by the council, and being transparent in what we do and the information we hold. There's a particular focus on this year's service plan on three areas: customer service, highly performing services through performance management, and ensuring quality in what we do. So moving on to the detail within the service plan. In democratic services, PG 1, we will fully implement the modern.gov system, aiming to be up and running by May to support the new council with full back office reporting processes in place by the end of the financial year, and that is the back office system which supports the creation of committee papers. PG 2, we will ensure that our documentation is of a high standard. PG 3, we'll manage the transition from the current to the new council, which is a huge job for all of us, but particularly the democratic services team, particularly in respect of the new member induction programme. And there was a question earlier about ongoing member training, and just to reassure members that as well as the particular focus on the induction programme, member training is something that is ongoing and needs to be ongoing every single year. In licensing, PG 4, we'll continue to deliver our compliance inspection programme, and importantly, share the results of that programme with councillors and others. We've made a commitment to visiting every licensed premise within two years. In practice, that means visiting 240 licensed premises in 2015-16. PG 5, we will complete our back office processes and systems review. This is really making sure that we maximise the benefits from the existing ICT systems that we've got in place as opposed to putting new systems in place. PG 6, we plan to implement a number of taxi driver initiatives to improve our customer service and performance around taxi drivers and hackneyed carriages, specifically a new newsletter, a new style liaison panel, which we're already trialling, a point system to support members in their decision-making around licences, which is something we can learn from other councils in respect of, and looking at options for providing our driver knowledge test online rather than face-to-face. In legal services and land charges, PG 7, we'll continue to provide a high-quality advice, and that's obviously the core business of the team. PG 8, we need to analyse and plan for the outcomes of the government's proposals to centralise one element of the local land charger services into the land registry. Assuming royal assent is given to these plans later this year, 2015 will see a number of pilots across the country, with government intending to implement the changes across the UK between 2017 and 2019. It could be later. We'll continue to meet our statutory duty to provide a timely response on FOI requests, and we'll maintain our land charges turnaround times. At their worst in 2013, these were taking up to 20 days, but they're currently running at somewhere near 10th at time, and that's a high performance that we need to keep track of. In corporate policy, we do need to refresh, as Paul Winham already said, our council's corporate plan, that's a key action. We'll continue to deliver the council's new management framework, which seeks to ensure consistency and excellence across Waverley's managers. PG 13, we'll continue to manage the NGDP, which is the National Graduate Development Programme, and the Apprenticeship Programme, and will also continue to manage the citizens' panel, making sure that we use the results to inform our decision-making. PG 15, we'll provide accurate, timely and useful performance management information. And finally, on communications and PR, we'll continue to focus on providing a planned and structured approach. PG 17 will look to enhance signage and control our branding for Waverley, promoting civic pride and providing useful information. We'll continue to deliver making waves, have an internal communication strategy, and relaunch and embed the internet and internet, ensuring both sites work well and all devices are easy to use and are useful. I hope that's a useful introduction. I'll try to answer any questions.
Thank you very much indeed. Any questions? Mrs Els.
Thank you. I just wondered if we could have PG 3, the success criteria, or if I could have it explained. I don't quite understand it. I'm not sure, I think it needs rearranging into a well-known phrase or saying, but I'm not sure. What does it mean? Programme of member training going is based on a councillor training needs and that? It doesn't actually mean anything to me. Does it mean attendance, member training attendance, or what does it mean? Please, thank you.
So, chair, I think that is a typo. Really what it should say is programme of ongoing member training is based on councillor training needs analysis, so apologies for that.
Thank you. Mr Ramsdale?
Thank you, chairman. My first point may reflect that I did get the induction training, and the ongoing training doesn't seem to have kicked in either. But could I suggest that the committee minutes and reports need a review by a group of councillors? Because I've made a few suggestions, some of those have been supported by senior officers, and then a member of staff has said, oh no, we don't do it that way. In particular, I think the minutes ought to reflect the offices that are present at a meeting, and also I think we have a case of including something called a post-meeting note, where the day after a meeting, an officer answers a question that was raised. Well, it'd be a good idea to include it so that the person reading it minutes later has all the information together. So with those two suggestions, I think there's a need for some sort of review of those documents. Second point I'd like to raise regarding PG 17, where the success criteria is about replacing signage. Well, I thought the whole idea was we were going to have new signs and more signs. So to me, a successful criteria should be some sort of level of coverage. How many of the locations that we think should have signs do have good ones? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Munro?
I wonder if PG 20 could be expanded out of just the website, important though that is, into social media generally. I have a feeling we're slightly behind the curve on that. I may have missed it, it may be elsewhere.
Thank you. Mr Edwards?
Thank you, chairman. I don't see anywhere here, it's the same as last year, I couldn't make last year's comments, but nowhere is the mayor mentioned. That's the biggest PR we've got, and I think the mayor should be mentioned.
It was mentioned under Mr Pello, I think, but we need to promote it more, I think, you'll say, Mr Edwards. Thank you. Anybody else? She's sitting at the back with a BDI on. Right, then in which case, let's move on. And last but not least, Wendy Gaines. I'm so sorry.
Chair, do you want to answer?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was conscious of Mr Goodrich's television programme. Can we have some answers, Mr Taylor? Thank you.
Thank you, madam chair. On the first point about induction and ongoing training, just to reiterate that both are equally important, we have that important job to do to get member induction sorted out, and there will be a specific member induction programme, and there will also be ongoing training provided every year for all members. In terms of the suggestion around committee minutes and reports, thank you very much, that's a useful suggestion. One of the things you'll see in the service plan is a commitment to us running a customer survey in terms of the committee papers that we provide. That means asking members of the public what they think about the papers and how meetings are structured and managed, but it also means asking you, as elected members, our most important customers, what you think. So there is a commitment in the service plan to seeking your views and to acting on them in terms of updating and improving what we do. PG 17, in terms of the signs, part of it is around controlling the brand and the use of logo in the signs that we've got. There's a real mix of things that we need to do here. So in some situations, we need a sign where we haven't had one before at all. In other situations, we need to replace signs. In other situations, it's just about making sure that the sign's visible, so there's a whole suite of different things that we have to do. Within the action plan that accompanies this, there are specific targets around which sites we will do at what point. And finally, sorry, not finally, PG 20, expanding into social media generally, we do, the members of my team who manage the website also manage social media, so that's something that goes hand in hand, and we do try to link the two things together. So we have a number of social media accounts, and under the performance management that's going to be going on in our policy and governance this year, we're going to be tracking the number of social media followers we have across all of those platforms to make sure that we understand who's using social media and that we're doing it properly. Finally, the point on the mayor. Although the mayoral support service does come under Robin Pello's service, clearly in terms of communications and PR, there is a role for our team to do to support the mayor, and we do ensure that where the mayor is out doing things, that we give proper coverage to that. Thank you.
As well as giving coverage, Mr Taylor, can you do some promotion of the mayoralty? Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you very much. Then with your permission, I'll move on to Wendy Gaines.
Thank you, chairman. Thank you, thank you. The strategic HR service plan is detailed on pages 67 through to 70. The council delivers more than 100 value-for-money, high-quality services, and the continued development of a high-performing, highly-engaged staff team to deliver these services is a key part of the council's overall strategy. The key priorities for strategic HR for the next financial year are to continue to actively support organisational and service resilience. The staff engagement and high-quality performance management are well-established in Waverley and embedded into the works of this council, and will continue to be developed as listed in SHRO 1. As you know, the council has again been awarded the Investors in People standard following a rigorous assessment. Investors in People is a national award which recognises organisations that improve performance through the effective management and development of their people, and we have successfully held Investors in People accreditation since 2004. To continue to support organisational and service resilience going forwards, we need to be able to continue to attract, recruit and retain high-performing staff. In key areas, such as in planning, there is an acknowledged national shortage of professionally-qualified staff. Therefore... Therefore, we are focused on developing a skills gap and capacity management strategy to give us a robust strategy for the next five years to address our ability to recruit in areas where there are acknowledged skill shortages. One aspect of this, as detailed in SHRO3, will be the analysis of benchmarking metrics. Strategic HR will also continue to provide sound employment law advice and develop effective HR policies and procedures that comply with employment law and meet Waverley's changing needs and priorities. We will continue to address any sensitive employee issues and maintain trusting relationships with the union. And we'll continue to work with the leadership and senior management team to support high-quality working relationships between members and officers. Thank you, Chairman. I'd welcome questions.
Thank you very much, indeed, Wendy. Any questions of Wendy? Yes, Mrs. Coburn.
Thank you, Wendy. As you know, great supporter of your service, but I have to say, you win the award in SHRO3 for the longest sentence and the most jargon of the evening, and that's despite Mr. Wagstaff's five Cs. What I was actually going to say, though, was I don't think your criteria sort of should include half of the very long sentence you've already got in the action, and I think the second half is what you're trying to achieve by the analysis of the benchmarking metric. So, you know, it's not the, it's the where you go from there afterwards, isn't it, that should be your success criteria?
Thank you very much, indeed. Mr. Munro?
Exactly the same point as Mrs. Coburn, especially policy 03. Can we rewrite it, please?
Thank you. Mr. Ramsdale?
Thank you, Chairman. I think it's linked to SHRO5 and perhaps 03, but an observation for you, first of all, is that compared to previous experiences, the council seems to suffer high use of interim staff and/or temporary staff for filling in between a postholder leaving and the full-time replacement arriving. I don't quite understand why that needs to happen in this organization when it didn't generally happen at previous organizations. Now, normally, somebody said they were leaving, they worked their notice period, and by the time the notice period ended, you recruited the next person. So, I wonder if I could challenge you to have a look at those processes, to see if you can get a better process to get staff in faster and therefore less disruption to the officers and customers of their services.
Anybody else? Thank you very much, indeed. Wendy?
So, first of all, thank you and apologies for the very long sentence, as you've quite rightly pointed out in SHRO3, which will be rewritten. The comment that councillor Ramsdale has mentioned in terms of the processes, may I say, we will pick that up and have a look at that. Thank you very much, indeed.
Thank you. Anybody else? Then, we have come to the end of the papers that we're looking at tonight. Has anybody got a question that they were dying to ask and couldn't? Mrs. Else and Mr. Gates, I am sure.
Thank you. On page 16, CS16, the sentence, "More learners on study program equals..." What does this mean? I mean, it's a typo, but it's careless and, well, I'm sure it is unless I just can't understand it.
On page 16?
Page 16, CS16.
Oh, sorry. I was looking at page. Improve, it's the last item, isn't it?
Yes. "More learners on study program equals..."
And their achievements.
Have I missed something?
Achievements is... It means if there are better study areas for them at Waverley Training Services, they will achieve more. Oh, is it?
No, 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 it's on the next page.
Oh, yes.
"More learners on study program equals..." Full stop. I mean, is the word missing or something? I suspect.
I think it's just badly written.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, and it will be just, I think councillor Edwards brought that up in the original question, so that will be addressed.
May I just have one other?
Yes, surely.
On page 49, H41, I wonder if we could, if there's a reason why we couldn't have plus members for the health and safety information, going to staff and residents and members? I wonder whether that would be possible, because it's always useful for us to know what's going on in our patches. I'm sure we would get told, but...
Page 49.
H41.
Oh, H, I was on page 41.
"Promote awareness of issues to staff and residents and members." I would like add members.
I don't see why not, quite honestly. So, we could add that.
And Chairman, I do have just one more, if you'll indulge me.
I'll think about it. Yes, Mrs. Else.
Thank you. Page 50, H62. Internal audit evidence, accurate records in records. Again, I can't quite understand what that means. Thank you. That's the end of me.
Thank you very much, indeed. Mr. Gates?
Yes, thank you. I want to apologize for a rather brief question, which should have added that the provision of solar panels should be done with no cost to Waverley and indeed with the expectation of income for Waverley. So, if Mr. Wagstaff was concerned that I was after his budget, just the reverse, they can be, so it should be subject to a suitable business case. But it should be, it should be part of home improvements, but it should not cost Waverley, and there are business cases which will show that there is an income attached, isn't the Jane? Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you very much, indeed, Mr. Gates. Oh, Mrs. Foraczewski, I'm so sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I feel as I owe Matthew Evans an apology when I talked about rural exception sites. I had actually read this, but what I was referring to are those sites that are not rural exception sites but exception to policy, which aren't currently and don't have policies at this moment in time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, indeed. Then, in which case, Mr. Ramsdale?
Thank you, Chairman. It's not a specific point, but I think when you look at the weight of the, or the volume of references that have been made to typos, mistakes, bits of English that don't make up, bits of word processing that have been repeated, I do think perhaps the most senior people here on the officers' side ought to be looking at how's the review process worked on this, and how could it be done better, please? I, in particular, found it interesting to hear about Kelvin's brother, Kevin, on page seven at the very head of his report.
Thank you very much, indeed. Now, is that your last question, Mr. Ramsdale? Or are you working up something else?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Paul?
Final point, point taken, but I think, Chairman, thank you for every member's contribution tonight. It's been really useful. The officers have got a lot, lots of work still to do on this, so we'll feed it through to the executive, but it's really appreciated. Thank you very much.
Paul, can I just say, on our behalf, a very big thank you to you and your team for putting this together. I think you've got a lot of work to do, because, as I've said earlier, that you've got to work out what your outcomes are, against your resources. So, I think the point that councillor Ramsdale made, I think we all recognize, but I also recognize this was done over Christmas, it was done in a hurry. So, I'm not trying to make excuses, but I do understand. But before this goes into the public arena, I think we need to look at it very carefully and just make sure we've got it right so that we can all then stand behind it. But a very big thank you to you and your team for putting this together and for your time tonight, and to members for coming tonight. I think it's been very useful. I hope you've enjoyed it. So, thank you. Good night. Safe journey home.